The agenda moving with motion approve of the agenda removing the corrected items as present. Presented. And a motion member.
I'll make the motion.
I second it.
All right, I'm on the wrong thing, I think. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Um, next one is, um, board reorganization.
Did you have something you wanted to read?
Yeah, I did. All right. I write these letters to inform you of my decision to step down as president of school board effective immediately. Following the selection of a new board president. I know that being president is an important role, as is every position on other board. My other commitments have become too great for me to fulfill the requirements of my position as president. I feel it's best to step down and make room for someone with the time and energy to vote to a position of president. I'm proud to serve on our board as a member and see what wonderful things we can accomplish together. Thank you.
That's a job. Uh, so board members on the screen and on your packet, it says, uh, as we go through each position, um, it says that any board member may nominate another board member for one of the executive positions. Um, if only one board member is nominated, the vote, the board would simply vote yay or nay. Hopefully, it's all yays if there's only one nominee. Um, if we had more than one board member nominated for a position, the board president would just go through and ask you who you vote for. And then, once the board has agreed on a final candidate, then there's a nomination to appoint that person. So the first order would be if for Joe to ask if anyone has a nomination for board president. Oh, motion to reorganize. That's the first one. Just getting out of myself.
Oh, motion to reorganize the board of election for purposes of selecting new leadership to serve the remainder of the current board term.
Which one?
No, we're just reorganizing.
Motion to reorganize the board of education for the selecting. That's what, that's the right one.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
And Katie, I think you get to vote first all night. Just saying, I'm just here, I think, okay. I don't think we scrambled it tonight, so. All right, so the first would be for Joe to call for a motion for a nominee for board president.
Nominee for board president.
I nominate John Brotherton.
I second it.
Okay.
Are there any other nominees?
Are there any other nominees for positions?
Now, somebody needs to motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve John Brotherton as board president.
I second it.
All right. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
You can hand that over now. Congratulations.
I thought you were a better friend than that.
All right, so.
It really goes to John now.
Okay.
He calls for, I'm ready for vice president. Is there any nominees?
Can't I just sit here until we can finish this and then we can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need to do news press.
Okay, it says selection of board vice president. The new selected board president will now oversee the selection of new vice president. Any board member may nominate a board member, so. Vote.
I nominate Nikki Pettit.
I second it. And I'll make the motion to approve Nikki Pettit as vice president, board vice president.
And I'll second it.
Perfect. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Board secretary. A nomination for board secretary.
I nominate Katie.
I second it.
I'll make the motion to approve Katie Johnston as.
Were there any other nominees?
I'm sorry.
I thought that was the president, I thought that was the.
All right.
No, there wasn't a second.
There was a.
You're making the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Katie.
I second it.
Nikki second it.
All right. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
Now, Mr. Brother, I need a clarification that that whole motion has to be read. Hopefully, that's what's in the packet. Just, just what's on the screen. Okay. Did you see that?
What?
It's, it's here too, if someone else wants to read it. So we're moving to closed session, but it's, uh.
I got this on. Right here. No, that's not it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to read the one that's up there.
Make motion to move to closed session for the purpose of two C one, the appointment of employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. Two C two, collective negotiating matters, and two C three, the selection of a person to fill a public office.
We have a motion, I want to be able to second.
I'll second.
All right. Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mondo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Well, we'll go in the other room.
Right. Are you?
I'll go in. I'm gonna use that.
A couple of minutes before we get started. You can say where it would.
I did not put my notes to reconvene in open session.
Well, we need a motion to reconvene in. Pardon? Oh, the motion, sorry. I was going about Nikki. Now, I saw Nikki's here. Because she's the one that's questioning the rest of us. Nobody else told me that.
It's eight o'clock and we're starting. Oh, boy.
There he is. You're late. All right. We have a motion to back into open session.
Public motion reconvene. Tyler? Open session.
I'll make the motion second.
I second it.
Ladies first. Nikki.
Nikki wins. All right. Katie Johnston?
Aye.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Mordo Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pennett?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Next, public comment. We have comments. We have two. And Wendell?
I'm third.
You're third? Well, you don't want to go first, though. He said no. Okay, all right. Tyree Franklin. Tyree, right there. If you'd like her stand, if you prefer to do that, or if you'd like to do.
I'm his mom.
Okay.
Um, we wanted to speak today.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Alitha Dozier.
Okay.
I'm his mom.
Okay.
He's in eighth grade. He goes to JW Ada. Um, today, he had, well, he had an incident that happened yesterday with him and a friend, another student. They were walking through the hallway and he went into classroom nine, him and his student. And the other student that he was with made a comment, and the comment was something pertaining to niggers, slavery, and picking cotton. My son has IEP evaluation on his background. He has a, he can't comprehend things like the normal child can. He's on a fifth grade level. That's what they're saying for us. So, but that man said he can't comprehend slavery with cotton fields and picking cotton. I don't even watch movies like that in my house for him to come and say this, okay? I got an email from his, I guess you could say it's his counselor. She emailed me, um, the referral that she got because the incident happened yesterday. She sent me the email, the referral of the teacher who put it in. Now, the teacher said that he came into the classroom and made that statement and tried to rile the kids up, and she escorted him out of the classroom. I never got an email or a phone call from the assistant principal. I took it upon myself today to come up to the school because no one had called me. All I know is he was supposed to get an in-school suspension. So, I called him. I said, I'm gonna, on my lunch break, I'll be up there to talk to. I wanted to talk to the teacher that was involved, the principal, Tyree, and the other child. She told me it was possible that we could do that. Well, when I got there, I only talked to Ms. Walhouser. That was the only person I was able to talk to. She said that she then went to talk to the other kid that was involved, and he said that he didn't do it. So, automatically by him saying he didn't do it, that means he did it. So, I asked her. She said she did a thorough investigation. I said, well, did the teacher physically, how you guys looking at me and hearing the words and seeing the words coming out? I said, did she, did she see him say that? Or did she hear, hear someone say it, looked up, and by him standing there, she just assumed that it was him? So, she said, well, the teacher said she was 80% sure that it was him, but she didn't see that he said it, but she was 80% sure. So, um, I told her, I said, Ms. Walhouser, you do know that when it comes to my child, I'm not that parent that says, oh, my child didn't do this, my child didn't do that. I know my son. I know him like the back of my hand. I'm that parent that I'm going through the book bags, I'm going through the dresser drawers, I'm going to meet the friends' parents. I'm really involved with my kids because I know what kids can do when they're not around their parents. I understand it. But for my child, you see his skin color. What do he look like going into a classroom with people of his color? And there was different kids in there too, but why would he go in a classroom and specifically say something about niggers and slavery and cotton? So, when I had this conversation with Ms. Walhouser, she let the word nigger come out her mouth several times. By that third time, when she said that he physically stood up and said, you a nigger, you a nigger, nigger one, nigger two, nigger three, I was done with the conversation. Because I know he's not gonna say that now. If you would've told me that he was outside amongst a group of his friends, and he said, he said, oh, man, quit playing with me. That's how we talk. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but that's how the black community talks to each other. We're not physically saying, oh, you nigger, you picking cotton. No, that's not what we doing. So, she got upset because I said that you're not finna take, take and label him as saying that he did that when I know he didn't. I corroborate with them 100% when it comes to my child. Then she, I guess she got mad because at this point, I got up and told her the conversation is done. She tells me that he pointed that out, said, nigger one, nigger two, nigger three. And, but in the email, it says clear today, and can I submit the email to you guys so you can see it?
Nah, I would like to see it.
Okay. In the email, it says nothing about him saying, nigger one, nigger two.
No, just so he can say that. I'll take it.
If he, if he said this, wouldn't she, and then she proceeded to tell me that he threatened her and told her he's gonna kick her fucking ass. If he did that, isn't she supposed to call the security officer and inform me that he said that? I shouldn't have heard that in a meeting that me and her had after she got upset because I didn't agree with her that he said that. And then she ended up, after that, she just told me that she was taking him from the graduation ceremony, which is, I feel is wrong. He worked very hard to get to where he's at. You interviewed three kids out of 25 students, so because them three kids and their teacher saw 80%, the teacher was 80% sure, he automatically did it. No, that's not right, and that's not fair. Now, it's wrong. And then when she then told me that, after he threatened her, she said that he stormed down and knocked her mirror off the wall. If he knocked the glass mirror off the wall, what is that gonna do? It's gonna break, right? The mirror is still sitting on the wall, fully formed. And I say, he knocked your mirror down, why is it still whole? And I just walked out. I said, I don't want to talk to you no more. It's done. But I just wanted to present this because this is not the first time that I had, an incident that I had with her. But for her to be able to say that word four times to me, I, that's not, that's not right.
That, that a lot of time has run out. However, I think that we need to spend a few more moments with this. Do you all agree with that?
I definitely think we need to speak about this.
Yes.
Because, um, in my opinion, I agree with Ms. Dozier. Sometimes kids are being pointed out, singled out, and, uh, we're only going with what the administrator and/or the teacher says without fully investigating. And I'm gonna agree exactly with what she says because I'm going through the same thing with my own son. So, yes, yes, sir, I think we need to look more deeper into this and find out exactly what's, what's going on and why.
Some of you on the back of it, it might have another, um, email. I didn't have time to print all of them out. But the, I see Ms. Nikki, she's looking at it. That's the one that his counselor sent me yesterday. So, she, she was just letting me know what was going on, but the principal never physically sent anything to me till 4:00 PM. The one that's on the front, she sent that today at 4:00 PM after we had the meeting. So, that's why I was trying to print them out, so. Can you speak and tell them what happened?
Tyree, want to say anything?
I was, uh, I was in my focus class, and then asked my teacher, can I go get some water? So, me and, well, my friend was walking out of his class, and then we was going to it. We was getting some water, and the door opened. The door was open. And then we went in there, and then I said, I said, it's a lot of ends, but I, all I said was, like, the end. Just, and, and then my friend finished the whole word, so she said. So, then I came back to school the next day, and then she said, then the principal said that I got a write-up because I said the whole word, and then the teacher, the teachers were called.
But the two teachers, the two teachers that he had a problem with in the beginning, at the beginning of the school year, which was his math teacher. Every day, they was calling me on a daily basis between the principal and the assistant principal and the math teacher with the problem with him. And I finally, I just told him, I said, can y'all please, is in another math class that he can go into so we can calm this down? I was told that that teacher was a new teacher, and you know, she gets riled up and try to, she don't know how to get her class together, so she, she might raise her tone and get a little upset.
Man, man, we can't, let's, let's stay on, on.
Okay. So, with that being said, this is the same teacher that he hasn't seen, after he, after they took her out the class, I had no more problems after they took him out. She sees him yesterday, and here go the problem again. Like I say, it's two weeks before, not even, maybe a week and a half before his graduation, and y'all want to take the one thing that he's working hard for to try to show that he's getting better, he's improving with his learning, you're gonna take that from him off the strength of 80% and three kids. That's wrong. Anywhere it goes, wrong.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm, so, I'm confused. He was disciplined because the teacher said that he did something.
Yes.
And then he went home that day, and then he was disciplined the next day when he came back?
Yeah, the next day when he came back, I guess she said she had to do a full investigation first. So, once she did, she talked to the teacher and the three kids. Then she said that he has an in-school suspension and that his, um, rights for the graduation ceremony is taken. So, I asked, I said, well, will he be able to attend? Because he also, my. Because he also, my daughter also is graduating. I said, "Well, can he come to see us?" So, she said, "Yes, but he will not be able to participate in the actual thing." So, what made me bring it to you guys was because when we were getting, when I was getting ready to walk out, she told me that he threatened her, and she took it to the principal. You're not finna start, it's one thing to, to, you know, talk to me, but for you to add stuff on, you're not finna do that because if she really, if she really was, she could take that to a whole nother level, and he never even said these words to her. You could ruin his whole life off the strength of you getting upset because I didn't want to sit down and listen to you tell me something that's degrading, and I know that he's, he didn't do. That's it.
When it says here, "He also kept going with his talk as I was escorting him out of the room," is this what the teacher told Ms. Walhouser?
Yes.
Or...
I guess that's what, what the teacher was supposed to. Because she sent the, the message that you have on the back with the black writing, that's the counselor, she had got it first, and she end up sending me the text messages to my phone. She said, "I just got this in the office, I'm giving you the heads up, and so you'll know what's going on." She always, that, Ms. Williams always informs me ahead of time. Ms. Walhouser, it could be days, it could be a whole week later, whatever, but that's why I showed you that to show that Ms. Walhouser didn't reach out to me until four P.M. after I went to her and had a conversation with her.
So, board, I, I guess I need to perhaps interrupt that. The board, unfortunately, cannot hear the school district's side of any of this in open session. There's a lot more to the story that cannot be shared in open session, and also, this is not an agenda item. So, if a board member wants to follow up with the parent or the child afterwards, that's fine. But, um, and I can, in closed session, we can have this conversation at a future meeting, and we can talk all about Tyree's, uh, discipline history, and the specific incident, and the investigation. But, uh, short of that, we can't provide any evidence contrary to what the parent is telling us right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wendell.
Well, Mr. Wood, I got your, uh, your email concerning the information that I asked for. I want to say, I want to say to the board, we out in the community are trying to put things together so that we can help inside of the school. And the only way we're gonna be able to do it, we're gonna need to know what we have to work with, what we have to work against. And Mr. Wood has stated that the information that we will need will not be provided to us, we need to go online and look at it.
Wendell, can I interrupt just for a second? Could you tell us, I mean, I know, but could you tell...
The type of disciplinary actions that we're having here, the suspensions, where they are, not who's being suspended, because we did not ask for any ethnic backgrounds whatsoever. Where they are, so we'll know who is here, who's there, who's there, who's there. Five schools involved in one thirty-seven, so we need to know so we can get people out in the community. This, uh, this learning, and these behavior, is not necessarily a school problem. This is a community problem, and we need to get involved and figure out a way to repair what is broken. It's broken. It is truly broken. I won't divulge all of the information that, uh, Mr. Wood and I talked about, but this system is broken, and we need to go into the next school year with some added ideas. All the committees and all of that, that may work, but we need to get these people who's out in the community involved. We need to get them involved in what's going on in the school. It's not going to come in the next year or two, but we need to get some type of start on what's going on. We need to know what disciplinary acts are happening. We need to know how many children are getting out there on a daily basis so we can get a handle on what's happening. We were standing outside talking, and I'll say this to you all. No Fortune 500 company is gonna come into Ran To. We'll be putting beams in the hole for the next school year. We got to get our education system together. I'm willing to work it. There's others out here who's willing to work it, but we have to have some information from this district, from this board, on what is happening inside of the schools. This is, uh, an example here, and I applaud Dr. Wood, Mr. Wood for saying that. Maybe, but there's discipline problems that's going on in our school, and it need to be put out evenly, evenly. If I was a parent, I'd be sitting here too advocating for my child. But if my child is wrong, I'm still gonna come in and talk about it, but I'm gonna talk about it still in the presence of my child. We don't want anybody coming up to the school anymore raising hell about their child in front of their child. That's not good, because then you will go on a first-name basis, I don't care who you are, they're gonna raise hell with you too. That's the reason eighteen-year-olds are not in school, because Johnny said that, "Hell, I'm wrong," and that's what I'm gonna tell you. So, we need to use, we need the information from you all of what's going on with this district and these schools, all five of them, so we can help. The men and women in this community are out there willing to help, but we cannot have blind-sided sidebar issues like what's going on right now. Hopefully, coming back into the next school year, we can get it better. We need to come up from the bottom, too much room at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more? Yeah, that's it. So, we're summed up. Okay, I guess next is action consent agenda items.
All right, I'll go through a few things real quick, um, on the consent agenda. Board meeting minutes, I do want to make a public note, um, that the closed session that we had last, uh, month, there was a technical issue, and it was not recorded as it is supposed to be during closed session. So, the board knows that when we're in closed session, it's supposed to be recorded and retained as a record. Because we're aware of that error, we wanted to make sure that we were forthcoming with it, to let the public and the rest of the board know that, um, that was not recorded verbatim like it was supposed to be. That's why tonight, Katie, I asked how many times is it recording, just to make sure, and, uh, so hopefully, it, everything worked out tonight. That's not something that should ever be a pattern. Personnel report, I want to highlight that there are two new administrators joining the team, and they are both being promoted from within. Uh, I will invite them both to be here at our June meeting. But Jackie Huntley, who is currently a teacher at Northview, is being appointed as the assistant principal at Northview for next school year, and Jamie Bager, who is, uh, the, currently the assistant principal at Eastland, but I'm asking for you to appoint her as principal, um, and the board has known about this, and so has the staff at Eastland, uh, to start for next school year. But the recommended, recommendation is for her to begin June first so that she gets a jump start on, uh, next school year. And she is acting principal at this time, also. Donations and grants, I don't highlight all of them, but when you get ten thousand dollars for books, it's pretty darn exciting, um, so congratulations to, uh, Ms. Stivers Anders, that's her last name. She wrote a grant and got ten thousand dollars. Also to note on the consent agenda board is there are two contracts in there with, um, third-party contract providers that do special education services, and, um, they're in there. What you're approving tonight is, because the contracts aren't finalized. So, we have them mostly finalized, not anything related to cost, it's just the wording. So, you're approving, that you're authorizing me to sign off on the final contracts once, um, they are, um, uh, reviewed by our attorneys, so...
Can I interrupt just for a second? That is not an unusual thing you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that happens with...
Yeah, Care Solus is a mental health service agency that we're gonna work with for, uh, the Community Health Partnership Grant. Parallel, which we may not even need at this point, is for speech, language therapy services, for some speech services. So, the motion is there, if someone would like to read it, a nice one.
Yeah, so I make motion. A motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personnel report as submitted with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and R C S board policy and procedures, including ramification of bills, ratification, excuse me, ramification, ratification of bills, prepaid by the financial manager under board policy four point five oh. This motion made by, if somebody would make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Well, since I read it, I'll make it. How about, I can do it that way, sorry. And how about a second, Tyler, would you second?
I'll second.
All right, Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
All right. We've never done this together, so...
You want me to just take it?
You go, you go right ahead.
I hope you'd say that.
We can do as much or as little discussion on this as we want, but the first item, uh, these are really big deals. A three-year contract with our support staff union, this is our TAs and custodians. There is a short summary here, and otherwise, if there is a motion, we can move on, unless we want to discuss it.
I'll make the motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between R C S and R C E S B A, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five.
You second it?
All right, Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
All right. Uh, the CBA between the, uh, between R C S and our teachers association, and the teachers wrote all the highlights, and they're in the room here tonight, so. Now, Mr. Brotherton was our org rep on the contract negotiations. So, I do want to point out some highlights, um, and I, this is actually for both contracts, and this was my message to the staff, is that, um, pointing out that the board is recognizing that, uh, one of the things that we have to do in order to improve our district is hire great teachers and great staff and keep them. Um, and that means we have to be much more competitive on salary. And then the other, both of these were doing that. It's not perfect, but, um, I was very happy with where we ended up at the end of this in terms of, uh, being able to recruit new staff and being able to keep, um, keep rewarding the staff that we have. So, also, one of the things of note is we've added, uh, an hour to the work week, and you think that would be a small thing, but that's a pretty, pretty big deal, because we're really trying to focus on giving our teachings enough time to work collaboratively during the day. That was one of the big themes out of it, was we need, you need more time. One of the ways to do more time is to add time to the workday. You know, we all know teachers do a heck of a lot more outside of the workday. But that would, that is, uh, is in there, and I, I'm really excited that we were able to do that and carve out more time, uh, to work with our kids, um, or to plan and work with our kids. So, everything else is just little details, um, no changes in either contract to benefits in terms of health insurance. Um, and as the board knows, that is, still, we're getting a cost savings on health insurance because of changes related to health insurance, not in the contract, so it just turned out to be good timing. So, that's it on that one, unless there's discussion or questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between R C S and R C S E A for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five.
I second it.
Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Yay, I feel like we should applaud.
Yeah.
Those are both exciting. Now, much less exciting, um, is compensation changes for employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. That is the next thing on the agenda. So, who are these employees? These are clerical, secretarial, our nurses, um, that's most of that group, and the minimum wage increase is listed there with the average. Other hourly employees, um, uh, so who are other hourly employees? This would be central office, clericals, and secretaries, as well has a couple positions like our warehouse manager, who most people don't know, he's, he's hourly but not part of the union. So, the recommendation, it's a little different for our warehouse manager, is to do five and a half, uh, for him, and that is because his job has changed a lot in the last couple years, and this is the needed adjustment for him. And the director of business and finance, it's a freeze because when we hired her, we negotiated the increase in at that time. So, she started at a higher rate when she came in two months ago, three months ago. Certified and non-certified admin, oh, salaried, non-certified. So, who are they? Those are, there's not many of them. That would be our occupational therapist and our physical therapist. And they are usually paid to the teacher, document the increase. So, the base salary increase for teachers was six percent, so I'm recommending six percent for them. Certified and non-certified administrators, um, that is four and a half percent. So, like I said, all of our teachers are getting six percent, the recommendation for admin is four and a half percent. All the people on that above, uh, just so we know, the anticipated increase for those would be four percent each year in the next two years, because that's tied to the teacher contract and the support staff contract. But the board does have discretion on that, it's not automatic, um, so that's something for you to consider next year. Substitutes, uh, instead of, for those of you that are finishing your first year, okay? You know that for about every meeting, I was coming in making wage adjustments. I'm trying to do it all right now on this one, and so I thought, we thought to include the subs, because usually we come back at a meeting and do subs specifically. We're doing really well with subs, we made some big changes this year and are much more competitive. Even with that, uh, we are short subs tomorrow. And, uh, so we're gonna do four percent on those folks. And then we do have four individuals on multi-year contracts, and we have to follow their contracts, so you're not really approving them. Any questions on those? Discussion?
Does the four percent in the subs, is that in line with the rest of the county and neighboring?
We are ahead on sub pay. I believe we are the highest at this point. And, and it has helped. We, we, Hannah does the sub coordinator, I think a lot of you know that, it's one of her many jobs. So, she's gonna go home tonight and check how many vacancies we have tomorrow and see if we can get subs, so. Uh, but we're still, even with the rates we're at, um, short daily, probably, right? I read short most days, yes, right now.
Yes. So, then what do you do? What do we do?
Uh, good question. So, unfortunately, what happens is the teachers have to take more kids. That is typically what happens at the elementary level. They split up a class and put in a class with less, right? And now, the teachers get some compensation for doing that, but it's disruptive to what would normally be going on in that teacher's class. If it's a junior high, they usually, uh, it's because they're structured so differently, teachers can pick up an extra class instead of taking their prep time. And when I say they pick it up, some, a lot of times, they're told they have to. I'm really looking forward to a year like next year where we will hopefully fill all of our teaching positions to begin with, and then, um, summing is not as challenging. But anyway, anything else? Subs was the question.
Would, would you tell the audience again how many people were down?
Um, we have how many permanent subs right now, seventeen? And so, they are, um, most of those cover a regular classroom where we have a teacher vacancy. Three that aren't...
Sorry.
We have three permanent subs that don't cover a full-time position.
Today, we have three permanent subs that aren't, um, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We have four.
We have four that aren't already sort of assigned to a long-term situation.
But having the, the rate we did this year, we were able to actually hire some people who would come in and they would be reliable, and they're doing a very good job. But overall, are you asking how many total positions are we down right now?
Yes.
I don't have the hard number, but I know during the negotiations, it was 28.
Can I add one more thing? We also have two subs that are I E P subs, that they, that's what they do. They cover for the teachers, when the teachers have to go to an I E P meeting, we have two permanent subs. That's their job. They go to the different schools and make sure that that teacher can get out to the meetings.
This is what happens when we like sit up here.
That's putting lemon on her tongue.
I know. All right. But yeah, Hannah does a lot. I E Ps are individualized education plans, and that is the special education.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommended changes to compensation as presented.
And I'll second it.
All right, Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
And now we're going to sell a school.
Thompson, thank you.
All right. I don't know if we need to discuss it or we just need to read, we do need to read the full resolution.
That the motion here is.
That's it. Yeah.
Want me to do it?
Oh, yes. Way to go, Katie.
So motion to approve the resolution authorizing and directing sale of certain property of Rancho City School District Number 137 to Rancho Township High School District 193, and adopting an intergovernmental agreement with the Rancho Township High School District Number 193, and approve all remaining bills and items associated with completion of the project and transferring the property.
I second.
If you, although, yes, we don't own that anymore, so.
Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
And why did I say that? It, it doesn't happen instantly. Like, we're authorizing this whole big process, and we're hoping it's done by mid-June with the formal transfer open. And, yeah. Certified administrator evaluations, we good? I feel like we should have celebrated. I guess some, that's your job.
I know, I know.
So.
You're the party person.
All right. Certified administrator evaluations. So certified staff, which are our teachers, were not evaluated during the 21, 22 school year pursuant to regulations and rules in place due to COVID, and we actually took board action earlier in the year to approve that. What we did last year, but we didn't do this year, is we missed the step of extending that to administrators. So the recommendation is to extend not evaluating certified administrators for the 21, 22 school year pursuant to regulations and rules in place due to COVID. I did note, and I want the board to be aware, that we could waive evaluations another year. I will not be bringing that to the board for a recommendation. So there was a law that I think it was signed last week that allows for waiving of the evaluations for 22, 23. I am not going to support that because it's been two years, and Moto said it before, we need to be evaluating our employees, and barring no COVID craziness, we need to get back to good normal next year.
I'll make the motion to approve the addendum to the superintendent's contract and to waive certified administrator evaluations for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
I'll second.
Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Joe Robinson.
All right.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
All right, 15. All right, well, we're flying through this. Discipline improvement plan, new this year, ISB, the state board, is requiring districts to complete a discipline improvement plan. This plan must be approved and posted by June 1. The plan reviews discipline data and makes recommendations for next school year. What is in our plan is we have a committee now that's part of the contract with our teachers' association. Last month, the board approved expanding the care program as an alternative to suspension. The, the goal of the discipline improvement plan is to reduce out-of-school suspensions. That's what the goal is supposed to be, so I didn't say that. So expanding care, we're going to be back to staffing Bulldog Academy full-time, and we're going to continue with the discipline group, which is part of the social equity working group. So that's what's in the plan.
Make a motion to approve the discipline improvement plan as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Number 16, sure.
All right, so this is our one discussion item for this evening, and it is partly to talk about Board Policy 530, which Board Policy 530 is related to criminal hiring process. I skipped. I am on the screen here. We really, if I had missed the tentative budget, we would have a problem. All right. All right, so this is annual, and so for some of you that's your first time through, so actually, when last, the, the new folks, and you're not, here, there's other new folks now, when you came on last year, we did this last year at this meeting, actually, it was May, it was May, it is May. So anytime funds shift by, I noticed, we're going on hour three. If any fund shifts by greater than 10%, the board must approve a budget amendment, which is a revised budget. So remember, we approved this $30 million budget in September, and guess what? It's pretty typical that you're not spot on with the budget, partly because school districts have revenue from a variety of sources. It's not like municipality, where generally, they're stable revenue sources coming in. We have a good problem this year that we got more money in than we expected, so that's part of the revision. But at this time, we're not over by a 10% move in any of our funds. Our auditor is recommending that we still do the budget amendment, because by the end of June, we might be over 10% of our funds, and we have to get this ball rolling. So what happens, is you are approving the tentative budget amendment as it's presented, it's in your packet. It will be posted for 30 days. There's a, a document that goes in the newspaper, it's already run, and that is why we had to move the June meeting back, because we needed to have a full 30 days of public review. And we will start the June 23 meeting with a hearing, which is a very uneventful hearing, and we will then approve the budget amendment. Hopefully, it'll prove enough to run down. I don't know what happens if we don't, but we have to approve it. There, that was too much. Go ahead. Someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget amendments as presented and direct super, the superintendent to post the budget hearing notice.
Second it.
Second, thank you.
Second it.
All right, Katie Johnston.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Now, now, our discussion, here you go. All right, settle in. I'm going to try to do a brief presentation, but there were some materials in your packet. Board Policy 530 is hiring process that also indicates that we have to do a criminal background check on all of our employees. There are other board policies that address contractors that would work in our schools, volunteers, and, and needing to do certain levels of background check for that. In preparing for this meeting, I prepared another document, which is a volunteer application form. This was something, actually, that I kind of thought we needed to do after Mr. Goldston spoke at the last meeting. One of the obstacles right now, I think, to bringing in community members is the requirement that they do a full criminal background check. And that is a bit off-putting to people, and I'm not saying we want to bring in lots of criminals, I don't want it to be interpreted that way, but if you're a parent and you're coming in to volunteer in your child's classroom, we don't need a full criminal background check for you to come in and work in your child's classroom where there's a teacher in the room with you, okay? So there's a document in there where I kind of outline it, and what are the different levels of involvement in our schools that would require a criminal background check? So that parent situation, I just said, and Nikki, you asked me this today, so whatever, you know, I won't say what he said there. We do have a system where anyone coming into our schools, and you know this, when you come in the first time, they take your photo ID, and it goes into this little box, right, and they scan it, and they print out a badge for you. What you're actually doing in that moment is, it's your, your name and identification is being run through a criminal database, okay? And it's a sex offender database, which is the main one we have to track. So anyone coming into our schools has to do that already. So I'm not worried about a parent coming in to volunteer in a classroom and, and doing that. So we've mapped it out in various ways it happens. All of our contractors are supposed to do it independently, but provide us with the results before they come in. So here's what has changed in the past couple of years in the law. I think it's, a lot of it is tied to efforts to provide opportunities for folks with criminal backgrounds to, I don't know what, that there's a term for it, to improve their life, and and that, that's not a strike that's held against them forever. So when I started as an administrator long, long ago, if you had a misdemeanor charge for anything, you were likely not going to be considered for a position, okay? Now it's not asked for, we, we're not allowed to ask for that information on an application because we want to give people a fair chance. That's a law, that's not just something Rand Tool came up with. But any employee still has to go through a criminal background check. And something that else has changed in the law is now there are specific, you are automatically excluded, you cannot work in a school. There are, there are convictions that fit that category. You cannot work in a school. Those are typically the big ones, so any sex-related crime is going to knock you off of being able to work in school. And then it's the, the higher level felonies, and when I say higher level, it's things like murder, okay? Not a drug conviction. So a felony drug conviction wouldn't necessarily automatically disqualify you from being in a school or working in a school. So this is the intent of the law, and then what happens, though, is there's, there becomes a lot of discretion on the part of the administrator. So all of the hiring background checks, whenever there's a hit, a hit is what we call it. So we do the state police database, the FBI database, and that's all, all of our fingerprints that we do have to go through Rancho Police Department to even be fingerprinted. So any offense comes back, and we see everything, it's, every time you're picked up, it's not even a conviction. So there's rules about what I, as an administrator, I mean, was supposed to consider. Most felonies greater than seven years old are not even allowed to be considered, so it would be illegal for us to not hire someone with an eight-year-old felony, if that was the reason we chose not to hire them, all right? So there is discretion then when these come in, and right now, that decision rests with me, okay? So the discussion is if, and it's, well, you might ask me lots of questions, but this is the question to get us talking. If an individual, such as an employer, contractor, or volunteer, has a criminal conviction on their background check that is not automatically disqualified, what should the district's procedure or process be? And I can, you can ask me all kinds of scenarios, and I can tell you what we do right now, if you want to know.
I do want to ask you a question, but it's not nothing about that. When, unless I misunderstood what you just said or said earlier, you're saying when you take a parent's ID and you put it through that box.
Yep.
It does a background reference check. Does all the parents know that you do that?
There should be a little sign right there.
There ain't no sign.
Next to it. Oh, I can check, it should be up.
I mean, aren't you deceiving these parents? I mean, I know some of these parents are not going to want that to be done to them.
Well, it only is checking the sex offender registry, that's the thing it's checking. And if you're a sex offender, you can't come in school, period.
Well, I can understand that, I'm just saying.
How about I find out and get you more specific?
Yeah, because.
I know when we first.
I'd be shocked if some, somebody told me that, I gave my ID, and then they're saying, oh, by the way, we're checking.
So there's supposed to, there's supposed to be a sign up in every school where they, at the entrance.
Well, I've never seen it. I have some little stuff, but.
But that was a security thing that was put in place four years ago, I think, yeah.
So for four, for the last four years, you've been doing that to, to parents?
You know how we go to the office, we have to give them.
Okay, I understand that. I know, I know exactly what he's talking about.
I just didn't know that that's what they were checking.
But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that you guys are doing a background reference check on them. Let's see if I ask. Well, you said sexual.
That, so I need to verify, I, I want to give you a correct answer. What exactly is it checking?
Okay.
But I know it's, the main thing is sex offender.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not personally worried about it, but.
I didn't know it was checking.
Do we have to sign something?
No.
I mean, that's deceiving them, aren't they? Isn't it?
And you're saying that there should be something listed that explains if that's what they're doing?
Yes.
Do you think that the?
I'm sure it's pretty small print, it's not, yeah.
Do you think the office before saying, this is what we're doing, and you should read it, because?
No.
Might be something we want to do.
Yeah, but that's, to me, is just wrong. Just my opinion.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
I can provide an update on that prior to the next meeting.
So back to the hiring stuff. Do we have a policy in place now?
The policy, first, is the law.
Yeah.
And the law is where it's, you cannot automatically exclude someone unless they have certain types of convictions.
But what are those certain types of convictions?
So they're listed out in the law, but they're primarily sex offenses and serious types of felonies. I said murder.
Right.
What about child abuse? I would have to check. It would be the type of conviction. So that's why when it comes back on an employee, a felony conviction on an employee for us has been pretty rare. And anytime there's an employee with a felony conviction, I call the attorney, because we have to verify with this list, is there one in there? Because if it's an automatic disqualifier, there's nothing for me to even consider.
So what about if it is a volunteer at school?
It would, if they were a volunteer that needed the full criminal background check, it would follow a similar process, that if it was automatically disqualifying, I would have to tell that person that they cannot volunteer. But if it was a, I mean, let's say it's a felony DUI, because that's one I do see. So a felony DUI is, is there any reason someone with a felony DUI, this is a question for the board, not me, with a felony DUI cannot work in a school?
So that would be something that we need to discuss.
Right. So right now, I know I would not deny access for that conviction, right?
But they're, okay.
But if I got in there and there, this person has five felony DUIs in two years, okay? That, and I haven't seen that frankly, but that might be a different decision for me. So that's where it's like, so that's my question, is do we want this to be just at my discretion, or do we want to consider having something in place where, I know with some of you I talked about, options could be that I simply consult the executive board of the, the executive team of the board, which is the president, vice president, secretary, because delaying until the board meetings is not realistic when it comes to hiring and things like that. Or we could say that, I would say particularly if it's an employee, that you would, the other option is that it's considered by the board in closed session. We can't, we couldn't do it in an open session, but you could, you, what we could do is discuss it in closed session. and then when we come back out and it's in the personnel report, we can remove an individual from the personnel report, right? Volunteers right now, it's, it's, it's a different area. Volunteers are outside contractors. It's still following the same process where it's, comes in to me, I'm the one who reviews it, I talk with the attorney, and then I make the decision.
I would like to see if we had something good on that.
What do other board members think? Do we have other questions?
I would say based on the situation, you know, so the executive board members, and like you said, it takes too long for another board leader all around. That way you guys can discuss it and make a decision on it.
I agree with Joe. And I don't mind because it, it, part of it is, it's, this is a very difficult decision at times and I don't mind talking it through with other people, right? And so I guess, anyway, we were done, I was gonna say what I could do next.
But I think with three opinions, I think it'd be better that way cuz like, you know, and I'll go back to the DUI thing, you know, people, people end up with DUIs. Now, of course, like you said, you, you, you had five of the couple of years, I'm sure you'd probably be in jail, but of course, then I'm sure the, the executive board members would agree with you and say, no, we probably shouldn't hire that person.
And so I guess what I can do, and assuming there's not, I mean, it sounds like there's, well, there are four of you already have said, yeah, let's do it, is I would work with our attorney and looking at what that would look like in terms of policy and how we would write that in. I think one other question will be, we have to be careful that three board members aren't making decisions outside of board meetings and causing an Open Meetings Act issue. I mean, I would envision it probably as if, you know, I call John, I tell him the situation, he tells me what he thinks. I call Nikki, tell her the situation and tells me what she thinks. And I call Katie, and I mean, that's the three exec board. And assuming there's a consensus, I would just move forward based on that. I just need to make sure that, one, we're not creating an Open Meetings Act violation and two, we have board policy that would support that. So I can work on drafting something. If that's what the board wants me to do. I think that's what the board, four of you told me to do that, basically, so. Does that sound like a way to capture what we just talked about?
That's okay. I probably just need to read more about what, you said felonies? I mean, what felonies are considered?
Automatically exclusion.
Yeah.
And we don't have say on that. We would be breaking the law if we hired someone who had one of the nine.
I understand. Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember, I, I remember I was principal and I wanted to hire a guy, and this was not in this district or Urbana, now you know where it was. But this guy had a pending felony charge that was for battery or something like that. And it was a hard-to-fell teacher position and the superintendent came in and said, I'm not gonna hire someone who gets in fights. That, we've moved a long way since that time. So I think an important thing, and I think the exec board would keep that in mind, is we have to put on our parent hats, right? And ask the question, is this someone we want with our kids? Okay? And that's part of, or how is it going to be perceived if this person is with our kids by others? But I am fine with getting more opinions on that before I make those decisions. I guess I, yeah, I'll stop. I keep saying I'll stop.
This is, it's not you're stopping. Cuz I'm looking around. We all kind of agree on this?
Yeah, I'll bring something back at our June meeting to get started. It doesn't seem we're approving anything quite yet, but I, I think I'll, done. Good, I'll do it. Thank you. Full of blood, take the mic, phone away. Information, is it information item?
That's right.
For the public to be aware, we are gonna have a special meeting on June 6th. If public comes to participate in public comment, you won't sit here during the meeting, you're probably gonna get moved to another room cuz we are gonna meet in this room for the self-evaluation in closed session. So this will be the closed session board room. And we don't record that one because it's closed session. We record the closed session, yes, but we don't broadcast. The regular meeting schedule for June 16th has been bumped to June 23rd for, because of the budget amendment. Information items, also board policy updates. I am sifting through the first update for this quarter for our board policy. So new board member, we, all of our board policies go through the Illinois Association of School Boards. So whenever there are new laws, there are attorneys with IASB that help rewrite board policies so that we're complying with the law. Most of the issues, we don't have any say in because we have to follow the law. Sometimes there's some choices, this is not a situation where we have many choices, so we have to revise our anaphylaxis management. This is what we do with EpiPens, very exciting. And the healthcare, right, of Conscious Act is the other one, which has come up a lot, I think, during COVID. I don't really understand what we're gonna be asked to approve, so I have to read through that one a little more. And also every five years, every policy is on cycle to get reviewed. That's what most of the changes are. We did have two FOIA requests. A board member asked me, what's SmartProcure? SmartProcure is a business that they FOIA us every couple of months. It's a, it's a report that we just run in the business office and send it to them. It's about our vendors, it's a list of vendors and purchases and things. Media, Broadmeadow made the big news with their career day. The student discipline report that we talked about last month is in the packet. I was reading through it this month more carefully. This may be something we want to discuss more, if, if you've looked at it, cuz it's confusing to read. I'm used to reading it in Skyward, but yeah, I'm not sure. If you look at it and you have questions, still give me a call.
Is this the report that Mr. Golds knew?
No. This is a list of all of our suspensions and in-school suspensions, and it's each student's data.
So that's not what?
No. Yeah, we can't share that one. Even if, yeah, it's, cuz it's way too much. It would be almost all redacted if we did this. Yeah, but it's something we talked about last month because we talked about student discipline so that you can actually see what kids are getting suspensions and in-school suspensions for. We don't have any more public comment?
And it's okay, we're a board, I'm gonna make the motion. Motion to appoint Diane Mendoza to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Annie Graham. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. A little call vote.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Yay, you're appointed, Diana, you can come up. We're gonna swear you in now.
Yeah, we got, we got the information.
Oh my gosh, it's only on the screen. Okay.
So how's it turned over there?
You have to stand here and read the whole thing. Yeah.
No, you shouldn't have to do that.
You shouldn't have to.
How are we gonna do it?
I'll let you go. But it's right up there, so stand close enough to read it. Katie said I should have printed it out and I forgot to print it out, but at least it's there on the wall, so.
There's just a lot more.
And I will go short. You'll say aye and then your name.
Aye, Diane Mendoza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Rancho City Schools.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Rancho City Schools.
Katie, think we would have had this last time, it would have been better with it.
It, it could have been.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of State of Illinois.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayers' interest.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
Of opinion by my fellow board members and others.
Of opinion by my fellow board members and others.
Who seek a hearing.
Who seek a hearing.
Before the board.
Before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member.
I shall recognize that a board member.
Has no legal authority.
Has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And decisions can be made only by majority vote.
And the decisions can be made by only, by majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions.
While retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education.
As part of the Board of Education.
I shall accept responsibility for my role.
I shall accept responsibility for my role.
In equitable and quality education for every student.
In equitable and quality education of every student.
In the school district.
In the school district.
I shall foster with the board.
I shall foster with the board.
Extensive participation of the community.
Extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals.
Formulate goals.
Define outcomes.
Define outcomes.
And set the course for Rancho City Schools.
And set the course for Rancho City Schools.
I shall assist in establishing a structure.
I, I shall assist in establishing a structure.
And an environment designed to ensure all students.
And an environment designed to ensure all students.
Have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential.
Have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential.
Through a sound organizational framework.
Through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment.
Of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children.
Of student achievement in all the conditions affecting the education of our children.
In compliance with state law.
In compliance with state law.
I shall serve as, as education's key advocate on behalf of students.
I shall serve as an education key advocate on behalf of students.
And our community schools.
And our community schools.
To advance the vision for Rancho City Schools.
To advance the vision for Rancho City Schools.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent.
And I shall strive to work together with this district superintendent.
To lead the school district to fulfilling the vision the board has created.
To lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, the board has created.
Fostering excellence for every student.
Fostering excellence for every student.
In the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
In the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Moto, you wanna have a letter slide in there?
Oh.
We're gonna have a goal of having new name badges by next meeting.
Yes.
Katie and Diane. If anyone would ever like to ask me to shorten the, oh, it's lovely. Happy to look into it.
I think that would be good.
Oh boy. Okay. You can be president three times by the time of the United States. Board and superintendent comments.
I just wanted to say that I went and visited the schools last Friday and I had a great time. I was, I learned a lot. I did not realize a lot of the things that were going on at the schools, which is horrible to say, but it's the truth. Just with lots of different things. And it was a pleasure to go and see the activity and the students, everything that was going on. And I really enjoyed myself. It was a great time and I think that our teachers are doing a fabulous job and I just wanted to let them know that.
Thank you.
So thanks.
I have something, the JW later plays this weekend, so if you can make it out, I would recommend it, they always do a really good job, so.
Katie, could you tell us what the?
Let me look.
It's a long name. Diana, we made Katie say something last time. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to. Thanks for putting me on the spot, Scott.
And I look forward to working with everybody.
I do kinda wanna acknowledge something. I mean, you are more than Diane Mendoza who speaks Spanish, but you are our first school board member who is a native Spanish speaker as far as I know. I think that is true. So congratulations. Breaking the barriers for us, so. Did you find something?
I can't find the title cuz I would have to scroll through, but it is at seven o'clock on Friday and two on Saturday. So if you can make it out, it's about a talk show.
Probably seven and thirty-two?
You said Aider.
Yeah, at Aider, seven on Fri, seven on Friday and two on Saturday.
We invested a lot of money in that sound system, so I hope it works, so.
We'll find it.
I want a couple celebrations. One, we have two students today. I heard some people talking about the high school kids going to the state track meet, but Aider has two students who qualified for state this year. Dayton and Ariana. I cannot remember last names off the top of my head, but.
Ariana Bell.
Ariana Bell and Dayton.
Wilson.
Yeah. You're not related. Discuss and, discuss. They did a little celebration of Aider and I know it's posted on the internet today. Also, we have five retirees and I know that board members, you, I'll have a little write-up for the next board meeting, but we have five retirees. The board signed some cards for them. We changed traditions during COVID. We used to always give a clock to our retirees. Now the retirees have an option of a clock or a donation to a charity of their choice. And this year they all picked a charity. So Hannah, don't tell anyone this, but Hannah and I next Monday are gonna deliver flowers and they're not watching, they're retiring. We're gonna deliver the card with flowers to their classrooms. It's three, three teachers and two support staff that are retiring, yeah. And some of them have been here a long time, so, and their schools are doing some things for them also.
Also, the Aider pop band got an excellent rating.
We have a pop band?
That's what Dazman.
Dazman.
It was the pop concert.
Ah, yes. The band.
Yeah, the band.
I have something. So before I came home and became a barber, I was in professional baseball and I instructed at one of the umpire schools and I told everybody that came through that there are thousands of people out there that think they can umpire a professional baseball game. In that case, they spent money to come to umpire school for me to tell them that they couldn't. But at least they tried. So to the people that have, that applied for the two vacant spots and to the two that were voted on, you did something that many people in the community think that they can do and didn't stick their neck out or throw their net, their hat in the ring. So thank you.
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I do, sorry. I have, I have two goals that I set for myself that I'd like for us to, as a board, continue to try to get it right and not be right. I think by trying to get it right, that means we're gonna continue to work with people, try to do the things that need to be done by like listening and so on. I, I, I just think it's much better than trying to, to be right. I, I just hope we continue to do that. And, and second, I'd like the board to consider adopting a school that we would all have a school, at least one. Now, maybe two people in that school. And, you know, we've talked more about parameters, if you would agree to that. But I, 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 I know how I feel when I go on the Fridays that I go. And it's so appreciated, and I learn so much. And I, you know, and again, I've had people say to me, well, why? Because they're working, and I know you, I'm retired, I have that luxury. But, you know, it's, it's going to a concert. It's just checking up occasionally, you know, just coming. And if you have a day off, walking the halls, you know, whatever. We decide as a group will do. But I'd like to see us, see us consider that at least, so.
I would love to do that.
Okay.
Diana, would you like to motion to adjourn the meeting? We should have let Katie do that.
Are we done with that?
All right. So just, I have motion to adjourn the meeting?
She's so good. Oh, yeah.
Hold on, we got votes?
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Diane Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay, before we go, we need to sign something else.
Yes.